How they started. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, this is the county commission regular meeting, they will be voting tonight. Here's your agenda, you can pause the agenda if at any time you need to, to read the rest of it. And that's what they're gonna talk about, the closed session is if needed. So, it'll be starting in a minute. All but commissioners Brad Calhoun are seated, it will be when they get seated. Brad Calhoun, Dana Whitten, James Burgess, Joe Burgess, Nick Dunham. And then the county attorney Brett Hyde sits at the table. And little table right here in the foreground, that is Latrice Wilson, the county clerk.
I did touch it.
It's cold.
It is. I'm not ideal. Oh.
My house keeps going too, I imagine yours does too. I just warm up the space on it. I don't want the whole house.
Many downstairs, but I have a lot of floors.
I use a space here, it just doesn't make sense for me, especially with like maybe two rooms in my house.
How's it going? Have a try again. I mean, not that matters. Yeah, same order, we're sitting there.
Yeah, I feel wait.
Let me see what shows you have this one. The truth. Peace. It'd be a surprise. You done?
I got, I had, so I have. Well, we can say, yeah, Chris.
Alright, it's six o'clock, I'm gonna call the meeting supporter. Um, just against the talk of the dedication.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Baker, please.
Lord, we just thank you this day, just the way you blessed us, even if we don't know about it, it's still a blessing. Most especially the things you keep out of our lives, Lord. And as we meet tonight, we are praying that you put a hand of safety on those in public safety. That you give our farmers what they need. And Lord, that you grant this board the wisdom, letting them to make the right decisions in your sight. So that this will be a community you are proud of. Lord, when all is said and done, we'll thank you in the name of the risen Savior. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. And so, pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright. Uh, first item is the adoption of the agenda, have a motion.
I have a motion to adopt the agenda with the addition of item number seven, new business, consider approving a contribution to the fire.
Oh, um, actually, um, a motion to adjust the agenda, to add our sheriff speaking about animal control.
And adding item number seven, fire and festival contribution.
Oh.
New business.
Okay, and adding the fire and festival to new business.
Alright.
Second, all in favor? Motion carries. Alright, um, do I go on to the approval of the financial information? Does that have a motion?
Second.
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 All in favor? Here it is. Um, next up, do we have any public comments concerning the agenda items? Minutes, I missed one, I'm sorry everyone, I'm moving a little too fast today. Um, a motion to approve, do we have a motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting?
Okay.
Second.
Second, all in favor? And motion carries. Alright, now.
Do you want me to address the, what I was asked to do, the research on the alcohol drinks? When y'all get to that, or you want me to do it now?
I think we can add it as part of the discussion, when we get there, it's fine. Um, if the board approves of that. Okay. Um, any more public comments, uh, concerning the agenda items?
No.
Alright, moving on to new business, on my first.
So you want the speaker, sheriff's gonna speak, right?
Let me start, let me start with the sheriff.
I think you know what speaker it was.
Sure.
Speaker, okay, first word of new business. We have a guest speaker, the honorable Andy, Sheriff Andy Hester.
You want me to, this is about the animal control, right?
Yes, about animal.
Okay. And I'll, and I'll touch really quick on the, we got a bid for her door. Um, it was like sixty-eight hundred. Um, whatever y'all wanna do on that, we've discussed, uh, maybe since that's part of the whole security system that we have for the annex. Um, I could pay for some of that out of jail fund, if y'all wanna spend whatever you were gonna spend on the keypad and let me do the rest out of jail fund, that's fine. So, I just need y'all to, to address that, how do you wanna do that? They can get the key out of there, probably.
Okay, thank you Andy on that, okay, um, thank you.
That's on.
Had that good working session.
The, um, other thing I wanted to talk to y'all about was the animal control, which y'all know is a kind of a bear, well, I, you know, an animal, but anyway. So, I just wanna give y'all an idea of what we do, go out and pick these animals up that we get caught on, they either surrendering the dogs, or that they're calling us about stray dogs or cats. Of course, cattle's a whole different animal we have to deal with, but just to give you some ideas of what we pick up by month, so January, um, this was last year, we picked up twenty dogs and one cat. February, twenty-seven dogs, two cats. March, ten dogs, three cats. April, eight dogs, ten cats. May, thirteen and twenty-three, seventeen and twelve, twelve and one, nine and fourteen, thirteen and seven, fifteen and four. So we're averaging between twelve and twenty dogs a month, and then it varies on the cats, between four and twenty-three. That's every month that we pick up, I mean, just about daily, we're picking up one or two. Some days we skip, they're not picking that many, but we have a, um, I have two people that, that do the animal control. Uh, Captain Fletcher, who does warrants in the court, also does transports and does, goes out and takes care of the dogs and picks them up. And then Christie, who does transport, handles most of the dog calls when she's at work, unless, you know, she's out and Fletcher does it. So I have two people that kinda maintain that, they feed them and keep them up. Behind the office, we have a, um, set of kennels, we got three kennels that we built ourselves back there behind the office. Um, just to get us by, cause the citizens were, when we were picking up animals originally, Tiff and Animal Shelter would take them in, we was paying them to take the animals in. And then Tiff County quit doing that for us, so we had to go out and find another source. We actually, um, are using the Humane Society in Worth County, which adopts animals out. They follow all the Humane Society regulations, and then we also, because they get full and they don't take animals from us, sometimes we've talked with Chris County and they, we have a contract with both of those to take in our animals whenever one's full, the other takes it, but if they're both full, we take them, we have to keep them behind the office. Um, the other reason we have that behind offices, cause if I pick up one of your animals, or a citizen's animal, we don't, we, we keep them for five days to give them opportunity to come to the office and pick them up, rather than have to go to one of those animal shelters and, and, uh, risk the animal getting euthanized or adopted out when it belongs to somebody in our county. So we keep them there for five days, and then once that's over, we, we take them to the, one of the animal shelters that has room for them. Sometimes they don't have room, we have to keep them down at the, the office longer than we want to, and those kennels stay pretty full. And then, uh, when we can't, we don't have the space to put the animals, we generally have to tell the citizen that we can't come pick the animal up. And of course, if it's a dangerous dog, we have to do something with it. We have to quarantine it for ten days and make sure it's got all of its shots, and it ain't got rabies and things of that nature. There's a lot that goes along with doing animal control. And originally, since the sheriff's office is one, went out and enforced state laws for animal control and our county ordinance. I just decided, you know, we would take care of picking them up also, instead of putting them on the commissioner's office to hire a animal control person, cause we ended up having to go out and get a ticket anyway. Um, we have started charging people, well, with, with, uh, not keeping their animals tied up, things of that nature, a lot of people will surrender animals. Uh, if they would take care of their animals, we wouldn't have such a burden to have to go out and do. People don't take care of them, they let them run astray on somebody else's property. And, uh, of course, if they're chasing livestock, the owner can euthanize them themselves, but a lot of people don't wanna do that. People don't, you know, some people have the capability to do it and others don't. So, anyway, we're tasked with keeping these animals. We're running out of space down there, um, behind the office. And I would like for y'all to consider working with me on getting some kennels, uh, that would hold more of our overflow when we don't have a place to carry them. The city of Ashburn at one time was building a animal shelter, they had a grant for it. And, uh, when Clifford was the chief, we had talked about trying to work with them to get that done, but that fell through, I don't know what happened with it. They built a firing range over there, and then the dog shelter didn't get open, so I don't know what situation was there. Either way, um, when somebody's full, it's our responsibility to find somewhere to keep these animals according to what the Department of Agriculture requires, that we feed them and keep them in our shelter and all that kind of stuff. So, I have some bids that, uh, two different companies actually, uh, gave us a bid on, on the slab and the building. We need to put a, a little smaller building on the room on the end of it, because we have to put cats inside in inclement weather, we can't let them stay out like we do the dogs. And also, we need storage for the dog food. We generally get the dog food, um, donated to us, and hopefully that'll continue. We don't, haven't had any problems so far with it getting donated. But, uh, fifteen kennels, we got, we got three down there now, and then we made two makeshift that are actually falling apart. But fifteen would certainly be enough to keep us under what we need. And then, uh, Yancy Fence Company actually done a, a quote for fifteen kennels, which was twenty thousand for the kennels. And that's not including the building and the concrete slab. Um, the cook construction and contracting did a, a bid for the slab and the building, which would, uh, this is shelters, uh, single slope lean to, ten by seventy. Um, it was sixteen thousand five hundred. And of course, the water and electricity that I have running out there to the, uh, firing range could be used to extend out to the kennels if that was something that we were able to do. Put it out there, um, but, by, behind the firing range burn. It would get it away from the back of our building, cause of course, we would clean those kennels out all the dog urine and defecation smells, smells of up there. Um, and then I got another, uh, bid, uh, for the building, was twenty thousand six hundred. Um, that was the second bid for just the building, and then just now, got text, when I got here from, uh, Fletcher, um, and Tiff, and Fletcher's and Tiff's kennel pit, uh, price was fifteen thousand eight seventeen. So, uh, a couple of them were fifteen for the building, fifteen for the kennels, and the other was twenty for the building, twenty for the kennels. So this, that's what, you know, one or the other, if we were able to do that, it would be, um, of course, we would be able to lower, lower the bid, and then the, the, that wasn't including the room on the end, which Tim says he can build the, the room for the dog food and then.
Was the one bid, the sixteen five, that includes the concrete?
That was the concrete and, and the shelter. And then, uh, and then, of course, the kennels are separate, we'd have to get the kennels put on the concrete, but it would leave, uh, ten by ten area on the end of it, where Tim could build a room, ten by ten room on there. Of course, we could supply the material, he could build that, um, on the end. And then the other two bids was twenty for the building, uh, and it leaned to, and the concrete, everything, it was a concrete and a lean to, and a trough on the back of it, so it would wash off when we cleaned it.
What's the city doing with their dogs? Do they, do they even pick up dogs?
They, uh, the city has animal control, I don't know what they do.
Mr. Rymmer picks them up.
Yeah, they have an animal control guy, picks them up, I don't know where he carries them.
They've been kennels, I think the kennels are of us, but, uh, maybe I think we need to check with the city and see, see if we got a deal with that. Yeah. Kind of did the one, the city got more, and I think we give it to the city to check, see what's going on.
Well, we have time to incorporate this into the budget.
That's, yeah, that's fine, I, we can get by what we got, but we just, when we have overflow, I'm telling, I haven't told citizens, I can't, can't do it, and I, um, you know. We just need somewhere to carry them, when we pick them up, um, we just need this place to put the animals. And we don't, I, we definitely don't wanna open up a shelter, cause the shelter, there's so many regulations that go with a shelter, um, whether you euthanize them, or whether you adopt them out. It would take, uh, the Humane Society, Tiff County, uh, Chris County, all have three or four employees that work near animal shelters, so that, I mean, I, it, we don't. And our people don't have time enough to run a shelter, it's bad enough that we have to just run these kennels out here to, till we get them somewhere, so we just need somewhere to put them, um, when we have overflow, waiting on one of those places to take them. But if those two places tell us that they can't take our animals anymore, we don't have a, yeah, put on, Brad says he'll, he's got a solution for them, but I'm not, I'm not gonna go to federal prison for none of you, so.
Do you have the numbers on, how often do we, how do we encounter an overflow situation, when we have been turned away?
Um, it's not often, it, it's probably, uh, a couple times a month, um, but it's, I mean, but it's a problem when it's there, so it's, I mean, we could probably, you know, even if we cut down the size of the building. Um, but the problem with that is, if you have to, if you cut down the size, you're not gonna, the problem's not gonna go away. If it was something that we received, we would just say, well, we could get down to five or ten, um, but it's not, I don't foresee people taking care of their stuff, they haven't. And it just gets worse every year, when we pick up more animals. And, uh, well, like I said, we started citing people, giving them tickets, and it's not slowing down any, so.
What's, what's putting them in one of them jail cells, that might keep the rest of them going to jail.
Well, that's true.
So.
Believe me, if I could do a lot of stuff, I would.
Four, you got four doors on there, are there four doors on that building? Or is that included somewhere else, is that on the, on the lock?
That's, uh, that's running the, you talking about her, that's the key fob on her door, but they have to run the, uh, they have to run the system through the building. So it could be easily added on to afterwards, you don't have to, it's the infrastructure plus the key fob, is what it is.
I only put it on one, it says four, that's why they did.
Um, I don't know what Tim, Tim actually called them, and, uh, but if it says four, it's probably, it's probably the lock system on four doors, I don't know.
It's four doors, but we don't want one.
Did he include the other doors?
I, I, that's why I didn't know, is this, is, does he have it set up for it to work on? Cause they may wanna come in that back door too, you know, that, they may.
He might've told them that, I, if it's got four on it, that's.
I just didn't know, it makes, I mean, if there's one door or four doors, at least spreads it out, more doors, I don't know.
Well, and we had elections added, well, then we had.
You ain't gonna probably put them on that block.
No, not the front door, but the, I, yeah, I agree with that, but I didn't know what he, he just says four doors.
We can get some clarification on it, do we only want one door, right? So.
They might bid for.
Yeah, cause we did elections, we did the annex, and it was louder.
Yeah, we didn't get it, we didn't get a separate bid for the nine-one-one system or her building yet. They were waiting.
So that's just up there?
Right, that's just up there. Because see, they have to run the infrastructure, and they'll have to do it there too, cause I don't think it's ran, at either other building, it's not ran. Um, at the time, they were doing the, the, uh, key fob system, the only courthouse was next, uh, and nobody wanted it. You know, the whole camera system, I always put in later afterwards, so that stuff was ran over courthouse and not over the annex, so.
Well, it says one door, not all doors.
So we, I guess we gotta look at this and make sure that the six thousand is for one door, cause that's all we want, and then we can move that four from there. Uh, I mean, do we have to make a motion to table that, or does that, do we move this to work session?
We just have to get that information, we can all table that, so.
In the table, look at it.
Yeah.
Make sure that.
Is there a motion on that?
Well, it's not on the agenda.
It's not on the agenda.
We're not doing things.
Are you locking that door now? Are you keeping that door locked?
No.
Why don't you just lock it, put a sign up, it, it, uh, come through, through the front entrance? That would stop, that would stop people just walking in on you. Use the other door.
In the meantime.
I mean, until, until we do something else, you know, until we get a, a keypad, that would at least give you the location.
Okay.
So we can discuss that in the next meeting, now on the dogs, the dogs, any more discussion on the kennel? I know I've spoken with you, sheriff, and, you know, I agree that like, if we can find other partners, it'd be most ideal to source, if we could, you know, outsource this. Cause I imagine, you know, you adding more kennels, that also now adds more work for your people as well. Uh, I don't know if we really wanna get into having all those dogs out there, but, you know, we need to, we need to, but I, I would say, let's see if we can, look if we have any opportunities with the city for overflow, or, um, and then go from there.
Yeah, and, um, what was the total number, the total number of dogs for last year that you had, and total number of cats? I know you, you said range, but what was the total number? Hmm. You can tax it, maybe.
I'll just give you paper.
Yeah, that, that worked. And finish incorporating it into the budget, thank you, Sheriff, I appreciate it. Two hundred and sixty-eight. Two hundred and sixty-eight dollars, five and twelve.
Alright, do we, uh, what are we doing with this, do we table?
We're just, we're just, um.
We need to look at the.
Yeah, so we're just going to move on.
Okay, well, let's, we will move on to the first item of new business, which is adopting the resolution number two thousand twenty-five oh three oh one, authorizing the filing of an application with the Department of Transportation of the United States of America, and the Georgia Department of Transportation for a grant under Title forty-nine USC, section fifty-three eleven, and authorize the chairman to sign the resolution on behalf of the county. Uh, this is for, um, the transit program.
Certainly. Second.
All in favor? Alright, um, motion passes. Um, the next item on agenda is consider accepting a bid for the repairs at the whole nine-one-one building.
Discussion, I don't think we bid on this.
I think we, uh, I, I, I think most would type a low bid.
I second, but I feel like we did on the same thing.
Second.
You went over the bid.
Yes, I, I went over the bids, one is clear, one is not clear.
Right.
Um, so I have a motion in a second. All in favor of going with the low bid?
Ain't gonna probably go with a low bid, we need to make sure that, uh, both bids is the same. And, you know, right now, they come out, uh, putting on the, in the papers, saying, on the write-off, they ain't said nothing about no, uh, put no, uh, they said any carpet advice on the write-off out here, we had.
Yeah, I, I said carpet, and I think we talked about vinyl, I, I just am concerned.
They got two, three different bids, you got two, three different.
This, this bid says, they'll be needing flooring throughout, all flooring.
But it, that one on the write-off. What I'm saying.
We got a motion in a second, so.
Discuss. Just do.
Y'all can, y'all got, y'all can discuss with the low bid taken out, once you get the low bid against you, can you?
You got two different bids, two different prices on different stuff, so.
Then we both get, the both bids make specs. Did they, did they do what they're pushing?
That ain't, that is not the problem. When you put in the paper what the bid on, okay? Then somebody else come and bid on oranges, and somebody else bid on apples, it ain't right.
Oh, I agree with that, I, I mean, it wasn't just on the same paperwork.
Was it just for the flooring?
It was like, he did none of different items.
It did not on, wrote on, he got, out, he did wrote on there, except it not on the write-off, that's what I'm saying. He go get the other one, and I don't know.
So you have a motion, just accept the low bid, correct?
Which was four thirty.
Oh, I said, I said the bid.
Eight three oh five.
I'm just saying, discuss the bids, like they, the two different bids.
And we still have work that needs to be done. Um, we spent twenty-two, we spent, uh, twenty-two, four sixty-six. Um, the low bid is thirty-eight.
Three oh five.
Three oh five, and then we also know the county's got other work we need to do, the materials that, right? So, you know, we're at sixty-one, sixty-two thousand dollars without what the county has left to do on this building.
We have plywood on the right-hand side, and they're going, on the white taking it off.
Well, if the bid is including that, then that's a problem.
Do we, uh, a motion, second. All in favor of accepting the low bid? We have one, all opposed. Okay, motion fails. Um, moving on to the next one. Uh, consider approving agreement for technical assistance services between Turner County and the Southern Regional Commission in an amount of eleven thousand, upon completion of the work and authorize the chairman to sign agreement on behalf of the county, this is for our comprehensive plan that's required by the Department of Community Affairs.
Know how much it is every, every time?
Hmm, I didn't go back in with the LA issue, but I just saw that in, in this contract.
We gotta, this is one of them where.
Yeah, I know, I didn't get remember me in that one, but.
That was last, last year. But that was my first year, and now that wasn't being compared with something else.
This is every five years, right?
Yeah.
Dividing by five, it ain't that bad.
We got, we have to do it. We got a motion?
Second.
Second, all in favor? Opposed, not, motion carries. Um, moving on, where are we at? Um, consider approving pay increase for Herman McCard. Do I have a motion?
Motion, credit, what, how?
Eighty dollars, fifty cents.
Second.
Second, all in favor? Opposed. Alright, motion carries. Um, consider approving ordinance for the sales of distilled spirits for beverage purposes, buy the drink only, excluding the sale of food. Do I have a motion?
Yeah, motion, do it without food.
Without food?
Mm-hmm.
A second? Second? Uh, discussion? Um, notice that.
I think we need to have the fifty percent, but that's just my thoughts.
Okay. Commissioner, um, Dunham, uh, says he feels like we need to have food. Commissioner Whitten?
Um, I do think there needs to be, um, some amount of sale of food, I don't know if fifty percent is the right number, but, um. You know, I've I've had lots of conversations with my constituents on this and I think it's very important, even if it's even if it's ten percent, something to.
You don't get ten percent, yes, but I don't like it is.
Well, I'm just using this number.
I went back. Look, the way it's currently written is fifty percent um in our ordinance as drafted. Tiff County's fifty percent, um, Chris County sixty percent, Ben Hill County sixty percent. The overriding theme in all three ordinances, Tiff County, Ben Hill County, Chris County is. Uh, generally, they divide where you can sell liquor by the drink into two categories, restaurants or private clubs. And um, the key thing in the ordinance is no establishment can have the sole purpose of operating as the sale of liquor by the drink. So you cannot operate a business with the sole purpose of just selling liquor by the drink. In other words, you gotta have some other purpose, either a restaurant or a. You can have a private club, but the private club's gotta be for veterans or it's gotta be for some fraternal order or something, or it's gotta be a five oh one C three or. You gotta have a hotel with a private, you know, area where you have a, you know, area for selling drink, liquor by the drink and dancing. That sort of thing. So it's gotta be a combination of those. I went back and looked at all those ordinances.
The private club requires food as well?
No, you can have a, you can have a private club with no, no alcohol sales in it. So.
Sheriff, does it have to be a nonprofit club?
No, um, and like Ben Hill County, they've got like three categories of private clubs.
Like the country club, I guess, like the country club.
So the country club, that would be a private club, so they wouldn't be held to the food requirement?
Right, well, it depends, you know, but but generally, um, generally, definitely if you have a restaurant, all the restaurants have a fifty percent. Up to sixty percent food sale requirement.
So, um, essentially, the surrounding counties do allow liquor by the drink without the requirement of food for private um clubs?
There are. Some like Ben Hill County and Chris County, but it can't be for the sole purpose. It can't.
Okay, so it can't be for the sole purpose of drinking alcohol. It it can have another purpose, but they can sell drinks to the private club. So winey would be in that category of because they're alcoholers and they would be able to do that under the private club for this discussion.
Yeah, you can't, you just can't have a business for the sole purpose of selling out liquor by the drink. You gotta have some other purpose of it.
Like the category.
If they is if someone like the country club did it, they would have to be members only.
Exactly. They have a certain number of members.
The sheriff.
And yeah, um.
Were you okay with that?
I I've done, you know, and I've talked to county attorney also and I've called around the southern part of the city, some of our co-partners and law enforcement. Basically said the same thing that the uh the food sales make some responsible more, you know, uh responsible drinkers as well, they said. Um, as far as statistically goes and quantifying, uh, the only thing they could tell me was that we have a lot less calls at restaurants than we have at bars. Um, if it's just a a uh for, you know, just mainly a bar. Um, and the other thing was they took into consideration on their ordinance was the operational hours. Uh, when you consider manpower uh response to incidents that happen at those establishments where um they didn't stay up later because law enforcement didn't have as many personnel. As much personnel out after a certain hour as they do in the daytime or up to a certain hour at night. Like we, we don't have as many out after one AM as we do um out during, you know, times whenever it'd be busy. So they took those things into consideration whenever they drafted their ordinance, um, but the food sales was uh and some of the other stuff that we were talking about was uh just like. If it's an establishment only for alcohol sales, you're talking about out in rural area where people are gonna have to drive to the to the establishment. Um, so you're inviting the people to drink and drive, um, and whenever they drink, they don't, they're not responsible and they leave uh. And that endangers people's lives and also the risk, you know, them getting stopped from being by, but those things were taken into consideration and plus when people eat, they generally. Um, get through with their alcohol and it absorb food absorbs alcohol and it um helps. Helps with that situation. So those are the things that I had talked to them, but they could not give me a uh qualified answer. We answered the call to the bar and it was a fight, whether it had anything to do with the food or not. They just said, we don't answer near as many calls. Um, percentage-wise as we do, you know, for food establishments as we do that sell, you know, just alcohol. So there wasn't many that that just alcohol sales. Cities, uh, inside the cities, there were a lot more uh of that uh type occurrence because of the convenience of them being able to get a cab or get somebody to carry them home or whatever. In a generalized area instead of out in the rural areas. So that's the information I found and those are the things that I would hope that y'all were taking into consideration. Because we only had one deputy out for many years because of call volume at night. Now we have two out because of call volume and I don't, when I have to come and ask you for the whole five because we had to go to a fight every night at a on the weekend. And I'm not saying it's just to be at a bar because if you fight, people have a rest area on interstate, but I don't, you know, I wouldn't want you to start selling alcohol at the rest areas. Cuz I, you know, inviting more work for us to do. But that was all I had found out.
Yeah, thank you. I got one business.
I think I like the idea of the hours, which is the big concern. The big concern for my constituents is they don't want a bar out in the country being out. One, two, three o'clock in the morning, we have a people partying out there. So the hours of operation, I think, for me, helps me get over the bridge of. The food part of it. So if we could, if we could put limit.
You don't have a one business in turn county, in county.
That's today. We have to think about if there were more. So I I think that I would be happy if we had the hours of operation stipulated. And then I would feel more comfortable with the less of a food issue.
So are you in favor excluding the sale of food if we are gonna do hours, which I agree with, I'm, I think hours is better um than food requirements? I think requiring food is right now.
Well, it's much more controllable, I think. Right? Cuz it's this, either this or you're not.
So we're going from. I was good with fifty percent food. Now you're saying.
I'm I my biggest issue for my constituents is they don't want a an app a a building being used as a a bar being open all night long. Party in and issue these and drink and drive. So if we could reduce the hours to where they're not out all night long partying and stuff, I would feel more comfortable with it.
That's that's a good idea, but it shouldn't affect the food.
Well, yeah, I mean, I'm just saying I like the hours. That makes me feel more comfortable.
That's just another. Stipulation you're saying.
Right, I, yeah, but I I think fifty percent is high for us.
I think one, you know, voting for fifty percent requirement or any food requirement right now in a county that can't even grow this population. Uh, that can't even expand businesses far throughout this county is limiting growth in our community. I also think add adding additional requirements to a law that's already been voted on is expanding government. And adding a s- uh expanding government and making more requirements for people. I think it's not in favor of small business. I think it's anti-voter. And I think that if we want to grow this community, if we want to uh allow a small business that came in here and said they don't even have ten percent sales. An opportunity to expand and grow this community, we should move forward with excluding the sale of food. Focus on other ways like limiting hours and not hold ourselves to a standard of our surrounding counties and try to be our own community.
That's that's a bar, right? I mean, that's just bar.
Hey.
I mean, that what that what you saying, man? That what make that?
Okay, there's a a a build, a business that has a party, you know, that doesn't have to have a, that doesn't have to have food. You can call it a bar. Hey, I got a bar in my house. Call it a bar? I don't know. Um, but I think we need to do things that's gonna actually grow this community and distinguish ourselves from others. And we need to do what the voters are voting for. They didn't vote for food, so I don't think we should be expanding government on the voters and making government more regulatory and regulating people more. I would be some pretty surprised if some of these board members wants to put more regulations on constituents and expand government control over their ability to operate business instead of making it easy for them.
I think it's more of a safety issue than than a growth issue. I don't think the standalone bars in the county is gonna make the county grow. As a matter of fact, it probably have the opposite effect on it.
It's gonna make it shrink.
I got it. And people don't drink no matter. They don't drink if you open a bar, you don't have a bar, like I just told y'all last week. I got my license and I ain't got sales no food to. Open and drink at.
Therefore, what you just wrote in this.
I can go there and sell drink by drink and ain't got sell nothing. It's a regular smoke bar.
That's inside the city, then?
In the city.
Where the city's got everyone.
The people voted, the people voted for alcohol by the drink, nothing about no food. Read the read what the what the people voted for. Alcohol by the drink. It said nothing about two percent, one percent, nothing about no food. Tiff County got everything going for itself. Chris County got everything. Turner County ain't got shit going for us. Everybody worried about one place opened up for a drink, one place, one place.
If we, would you be willing to um willing to put the hours of operation?
Oh, I'm through with it. I ain't, I ain't y'all do what you want to do. I'm I'm I voted, I voted to what the people voted for.
They can take whatever they want to do with it for them, they live in the city.
You can do it how you want to. I voted for. People uh people buy the drink.
For the hour of operation.
That what I vote. Got to have food, I vote for.
That'll be there the whole time?
Well, we'll find out.
I know that later.
But we have opportunity to go back and change it, right?
Well, we've also, we've also heard.
There's something that we know will be a problem.
We've also heard that that is, he just, the lawyer just informed us that the counties do allow establishments to have alcohol without food.
As long as that's not the sole purpose.
As long as that's just not the sole purpose. So we're still trying to limit, we're still trying to over-regulate our businesses and our community, in our small businesses. With this conversation. If we want to continue expanding this conversation at all, it should be around how can we allow people and allow businesses to still thrive without having a requirement of food? Not continue to over-regulate.
I think that's also a problem.
I do not.
Well, if it's not their primary purpose, then it's not a bar.
What's their primary purpose?
Well, we don't know. They have come to us as a business, but we put it in our ordinance that that's that's not, that cannot be their private per- the primary purpose. And there's no food requirement. Who knows what they could be? They could be, I don't know. Escapades, I don't know.
Hang one thing. What could they be?
They could be wanting like.
There you go. Yeah, that's what I'm saying. So they, so they, if they play golf, they don't have to serve food and they can serve liquor. So that's a bar at Waney Lake.
When you think about communities.
When I think of a bar, I think that's the only thing you do there is drink. If you don't do any other purpose.
And what's wrong with a bar?
There's nothing on a bar.
What's wrong with a bar?
But you don't want it out in the country, just like Sheriff was saying, because people gotta drive there and nobody's gonna pick them up.
You can be out there to hear, you can do it here and there. You can uh uh drink out there all the time.
They probably still.
All the year.
There's an.
All the year, drink out there all the time.
It would stimulate that their primary purpose cannot be alcohol.
Yeah, you can drink out there all the time.
We have the hours of operation under.
I guess that still creates, I I don't, I don't know if we have processes on that.
Well, I'm just telling, but I'm okay with it.
So are you, do we have a motion to?
I'm I'm know that we approve an ordinance that um has specific hours of operation.
What's those hours?
Well, we're gonna have to get get those hours no later than what what are they gonna do at midnight or what? What do they typically do?
Just whatever y'all want.
Well, we don't wanna pass one.
Nine o'clock.
We don't wanna pass one because that's his man of the land name.
One AM.
One AM, right?
Two o'clock. Eight thirty.
So no later than one AM and the primary purpose cannot be alcohol sales. Yeah, that I would stated.
How do we know that?
We gotta get a business license. Well, they gotta get a business license, right?
I'm gonna sell balloons.
You're just looking for a reason not to support.
Yes.
But we have to do an ordinance.
I agree. I the fifty percent food.
I don't think they should, I um I don't think we should have a primary purpose.
So so the person that the 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 one business that asked for us to look at this in the county could not get a license under this ordinance.
They didn't sell no food.
They're a golf course. That's not their mission. That's not their primary, that's not their prime. If they're a restaurant, I don't know. Who's gonna vote for it because thinks it's not gonna get re-elected because it didn't vote for it?
Food, did she say that's?
Ten percent.
Ten percent.
Yeah.
If they say ten.
They're mostly just golf.
They mostly golf.
I bet if we pass a motion, they'd come up with more food sales.
I I don't think we should require. Why are we trying to make a bar for a small business?
Create more expenses for a small business and golf courses are like sucking chest wounds of expenses.
I don't know why we wanna do that. And honestly, if there was a a strip of bars that opened like Nashville and Turner County, I would, I wouldn't care. I would be in favor of it. That's more taxpayers' dollars. That's more money. That's more growth. Turn Turner County out into a rural dirt road into Nashville if it was up to me. I love Nashville. They grew uh ten years ago, fifteen years ago, Nashville was nothing. And now it is a center of tourism, a center of money, a mecca, growing like crazy. Hey. Seems like this board doesn't want growth, but.
Actually, like, I can just say, like Chris Kenny, the only way you can have a private club is that your business has been in business for at least five years. Prior to making application. You have at least forty members who pay dues. You gotta be organized exclusively for pleasure, recreation, or for other nonprofit purposes. You uh. You are organized as a veterans organization, a fraternal organization, or other nonprofit organization. So that's the basically the only kind of groups you could be.
That's Chris County?
That's Chris County. I'm just giving that as an example.
That's cuz their American Legion has, I think, their own building and their own bar.
Um, and then Ben Hill County's a little different, but they have private clubs too. Or allow private clubs.
We just have to find a solution because we can't, we can't, you're not gonna vote, or whatever we come up with, you're not gonna vote for it.
I was considering.
Now heck, you weren't.
Which is not, which is not enough for that.
No, we we need to have.
Put it on the table, you can't, you don't get but.
So we have a motion.
We got a motion on the table.
She got a motion on the table to approve an ordinance excluding food with the requirement that the.
Then that close at um.
That that it has to close at a.
One AM.
One AM and their primary purpose is not only alcohol. Do we have a?
I suck the most.
Okay. Any discussion on that?
What does that, I don't know what that means. I don't, they're they, I don't.
They only take three to pass.
I agree, but I, but you, when you said that that's their only means of. It may, it means if you vote yes on. I'm gonna vote that.
Yeah, change it.
It it means if you vote yes, we're gonna look like Nashville in a couple of years.
Woo-hoo. I would have money. Ee-haw. More tax money. Give Andy more money to make sure we're safe.
I'm voting no.
All right, so um, there's a motion, there's a second, there's been discussion, any more discussion? All in favor of, cause approving of ordinance with the sale of distilled spirits or beverages by the drink excluding the sale of food. With the requirement that it closes by one AM and the sole purpose is not only selling alcohol. I.
Is their majority, is their majority first? Majority not selling alcohol or just not selling alcohol?
Not their primary.
Not their primary.
Not their primary.
Okay.
I saw one more thing for y'all on that. Is that one AM every night of the week or is that on weekend nights and closes?
What what would you recommend?
I would recommend not during the week, the one AM during the week, just on weekends, but that's, I mean, because you're talking about people. You said earlier, people don't want a bar open in in about.
What would what would be good on the week?
I I'm not sure. I I need to understand what the motion is as well.
No idea. We can re, I can re, I can reiterate the motion. Looks like there's discussion. Let's open that up if we are opening that.
Okay, so. During the week, kids at school. Wish the golf course person was here. What time do they close the golf course? Ten?
They can't play.
So they have the, they have the RV and all the other stuff in there, so they have.
Bar.
Ten o'clock.
What about Sunday? Surely when you.
Seven is fine.
Longer day.
Any more discussion? We're doing eleven, eleven during the week or on Sunday?
Monday through Thursday, Sunday through Thursday and then Friday and Saturday one AM.
They can't open Sundays after after one o'clock.
Uh, they 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 close it.
You're talking about like Sunday date.
I can't sell on Sunday.
They can sell on Sunday.
After twelve thirty.
After twelve thirty, after church, they about out of church, they can sell on Sunday.
Yeah, we'll put all that.
State law is.
The state law says you gotta put it on a referendum specifically to sell alcohol on Sunday, is that not right?
Yeah, I'll read again.
Is that right, Obama?
I believe that's correct.
You believe, you believe?
Believe.
I don't like to leave it, I don't like that, especially for my lawyer.
Yeah, I believe, uh.
I don't think I heard that.
Oh.
In other words, I don't have any reason to disagree with that, let me see.
I ain't heard that, because you still, you open up after, square of one o'clock, you can sell that.
I had heard, I need, I need the bar open.
I think that bar open too.
All the schools, all the schools start at one o'clock.
I had heard. I need the bar open.
I think that bar open too.
All the schools, all the schools start at one o'clock.
I think they, they, they sell just not for consumption, uh.
What do you mean?
You buy beer.
You got, you can't, because living on your front, on your.
Midnight, midnight on the weekends, well, the store midnight, and that just covers it all. Okay, so, um, we're going to consider approving an ordinance for the sales of distilled spirits for the purpose of liquor by the drink with not the primary purpose being alcohol.
What, what does that mean? It's not their primary service of selling alcohol?
No, they found one true.
So what else have they got to do?
They got a golf course out there.
I'm, I'm asking the chairman, what else do they have to do?
What else do they have to do?
Were you saying?
It's not their primary.
It's not their primary.
So fifty-one percent means they're doing something else.
Like?
I don't know, could be.
Strip club?
Balloons.
I mean, we need to find what something else is.
What could be?
Oh, they play golf out there? They play golf though.
The strippers are.
I saw that.
I don't know.
You been to a strip, you been to a strip, and we had one.
I mean, anything, okay, so, the motion's still.
Yes.
Ben, I gotta go on the record saying, I think this is a huge mistake to vote this in.
This will end badly.
This is, this is not gonna be good, because you gonna have little bars opening up all in the county, that's gonna be doing, ain't no telling what, and we gonna vote to do it, I, y'all gonna vote to do it, I ain't.
I'm, I ain't worrying about it, I don't vote.
I know you ain't, but I am.
That's fine, everyone in Tyler, to their opinion.
What they think, what they think wrong.
Well, it, the business, whoever makes the business license has to have them signing something stipulating that their business, what their business is, and that the alcohol sales is not the majority part of their business. And if they open a bar, it shows them.
Put a liquor, put, put the bar in the bag.
Hey, that's awesome, let's speak easy.
There you go.
Let's speak easy, and like the record show.
You get pair of pliers and a liquor drink at the same time?
The, the record show that Commissioner Denham, which wants to make it difficult for wanting like, you want to require them to have food, you don't want a small business to, uh, be able to sell alcohol. Is that, is, am I right, Commissioner?
I'm saying that I think you need to have food with the alcohol, whether it's fifty percent or fifty percent, I think that should be the requirement.
Right, you wanna make it difficult as from the lady that came in and spoke, the representative, so that's not possible for you.
I'm not making it difficult for anybody, I'm just saying that for the rule, for the safety of the people in this county, I think that's the right thing to do. Now, you have your thinking, and I've got mine, so.
Okay. That.
We already, we already, you voted, you voted on what you think, so.
Okay, so all in favor of doing that, closing at twelve AM, um, on the weekends and during the week, we're closing at eleven? Uh, I, all in favor? Oppose?
Yes.
Motion carries. Alright, next one is consider approving executive session minutes from February twenty-fifth.
Post.
Second.
All in favor? Oppose? Alright, motion carries, and now we will open up.
Seven, I added seven.
Oh, add seven, fire and festival. Um, there is, do, I have a motion to donate a typical five thousand dollars to the, is that right?
Yep.
Five thousand dollars to the fire and festival.
Motion.
Second. Second, all in favor? Oppose, motion carries, and, um, finally, public comments.
Thank you for the donation.
I, I would like to, um, ask the chairman to, which is then our standard practice, do a proclamation for Jared Kendrick. Who was a state, um, winner, I wanna, I probably was.
Do it at the next work session?
Yes, please, um, for, um, winning grand champion, um, in Georgia. And we, this is what something we typically do, so if we could do it at the next work session, I would appreciate it.
Lovely, do we have that?
Yeah, I do.
No, okay, awesome, great idea.
We support the board to do that.
Absolutely, we all support, right, we all support that.
Thank you.
Anytime, anytime, gentlemen, we get a state winner coming along, I'll always forward it to everybody, if he lives in the city, I forward the city council.
Excellent, congratulations, um, yeah, Mr. Kendrick. Is that great? Alright, um, well, no public comment, so meeting adjourned. Alright.
I think you can do it by resolution of ordinance. And if Sunday says.
Bye-bye, Jerry.
I don't think you can do it, uh, if we have this.
I got one.